Thank you.
Question is, that this house do not adjourn? Shaun Bailey.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity that the House has given me today to bring this debate. And all I can say is, well, here we go again, Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council back on the floor of this House. But before I bring my broader critique, shall we say, Mr Deputy Speaker, I do want to talk about the positives, because there is positive news about Sandwell. And despite the line parroted by the failing Labour administration in Sandwell, this £105 million they've magicked up that they don't have. In fact, what we've seen from the government, Mr Deputy Speaker, in terms of Sandwell, in helping Sandwell, is a near £411 million of investment since 2019, helping the communities that form the six towns in Sandwell to enable them to realise their potential and their opportunities. And we've seen it in £65 million worth of town deals, £22.5 million for Tipton Town Centre in my constituency, £20 million announced for Wensbury and Friar Park, and £4 million in a heritage action zone in Wensbury Town Centre. But of course, the title of this debate is focused on the governance of Sandwell, and the governance particularly around, for example, schemes like this. And I must say at times, Mr Deputy Speaker, I share the frustration, particularly of my constituents, who aren't seeing the council spend this capital investment that's coming through. And it begs the question as to why? Because surely it is in their interest to get this off the ground and spent now, to see the benefits both economically and socially to our towns, to see them come to fruition. And I share the frustration of my constituents in the governance of these programmes, that this just simply is not happening. A damning indictment on a failing administration. I would also, Mr Deputy Speaker, if you could just touch very quickly on the community that forms this. You know, I've been very critical of the council over my time in this place, and rightly so. You know, often referred to out here as Bent Labor Sandwell, or Sobiet Sandwell, or Socialist, the Socialist Republic of Sandwell. But actually, despite the failings of this crackpot Labour administration, actually, at the heart of the communities that I represent, Mr Deputy Speaker, this has actually built a real sense of community campaigning. And we've seen that come to fruition, quite often fighting back against the bizarre governance at Sandwell, through things like the campaign that we successfully ran to save Walker Grange Care Home in Tipton in my constituency, where Sandwell Council, Labour-led Sandwell Council, argued that it was going to turf out the residents' ages ranging between sort of 70 and 100, because they couldn't afford it. Of course, when actually we forced the transparency on that, Mr Deputy Speaker, we found they'd underspent their budget by £2 million. So, again, when we put them under scrutiny, we can't trust the answers that we get back from them. And of course, this spirit of community campaigning has also been shown through the community-led campaign that saw the saving of Tipton Police Station. Now, not obviously in the direct control of Sandwell Council, but it was very interesting to see the Sandwell Labour leadership rubbish the campaign that the community had led alongside myself and others. And interesting even more so, that our PCC attempted to rubbish that campaign, the same PCC who's using public funds at the moment to try and launch a judicial review against the government's decision to merge the mayor and the PCC. I do hope perhaps my honourable friend on the Treasury bench could relate his colleagues, that it would be very good if, once the PCC loses that, that actually he is made to refund out of his personal funds the money he's wasted on this ridiculous court action. But, Mr Deputy Speaker, let's just turn to the heart of this, of course, which is Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council and some of the stuff it's done. And it is a litany of things that I could talk about. We could talk about the special educational needs transport contract that went from having 19 providers to do a £22.5 million contract, dolled out to the friend of the disgraced former Labour leader. And when parents challenged the council on that, they were told, shut up or you'll lose your transport. They were told if they criticised the council on social media, their children, some of the most vulnerable children in the borough, would not be able to access the education they need. We then had the disgraceful situation some 12 months ago of a clause put in social tenants' contracts that said if they criticised the council on social media, they could face disciplinary action up to eviction. I mean, it would be a parody if it wasn't true. It is the socialist nightmare. And we see as well, child social services, once again, requiring improvement. And that's also an improvement from inadequate, Mr Deputy Speaker. And I have to ask comrades at Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council, why they think that kids in my constituency don't deserve the same life chances as everyone else? Because to me, their failure in this space is indicative of the disdain they clearly must have for the communities they represent. We can talk about the failures around housing. I've been working recently, Mr Deputy Speaker, as many colleagues have, around rogue developers. We had an incident recently of an estate, two estates in my constituency, where the council, dealing with a developer relatively new, untested, decided not to follow its usual course of using what are called advanced payment codes, in other terms getting bonds ahead of time. So were the developer to go bankrupt, they could actually access capital funds to do things like pave the roads, sort out the lighting. They decided, for some unexplained reason, not to do that. And when officers were challenged by me at the Cabinet Competitions Committee, they couldn't answer as to why they hadn't done that. And the political leadership of the council simply said, well, the boroughs don't do it, so why would we? Though the complete and utter lack of accountability from these people, the complete disdain for the communities that they represent. I also, Mr Deputy Speaker, have to touch on the waste contracts, and of course, the campaign that I've launched to keep it weekly, keep our weekly bin collections. Sandwell Council have entered into a £650 million, 25-year, yes, that's right, 25-year contract for bin collections. Their proposal is to take that fortnightly, predicated on the basis that it will somehow save money. Well, they're tied into this contract, Mr Deputy Speaker. I struggle to see, when they've signed on the dotted line for 25 years, how this saves any money. And what have we seen as part of this? We've seen a strike last year run by their paymasters in the GMB, which saw flying pickets, which saw aggressive tactics, and was only stopped because the community effectively rose up, counter-picketed, counter-protested, and showed Sandwell Labour's paymasters that they weren't going to tolerate this anymore. Because why should they? Because all they've seen is rising taxes, falling services and falling standards. Now, the retort that you're going to hear from the Labour administration in Sandwell is it's 14 years of the Tories. Tory, Tory cuts, Tory cuts. That seems to be the line that they constantly like to use. I'm sure my honourable friend hears that quite often from colleagues in their government. I would say simply this, Mr Deputy Speaker, in retort to that. The Labour Party have led Sandwell Council for 50 years, half a century, under governments of all persuasions, of all colours. And yet people's lives have got worse. If you want to know why your kid can't access a decent school, don't look here, ask Sandwell Labour. If you want to know why your streets aren't safe at night, ask Sandwell Labour why they're closing your police stations. If you want to know why you can't get your rubbish collected, ask Sandwell Labour. If you want to know why the services you pay for aren't adequate, ask Sandwell Labour. Because the thing is, this is the thing, Mr Deputy Speaker, they've had the cash, they've had the money, they've had the investment, they've had the resources. It is the case that they cannot be trusted to run the services in our communities properly. Now, of course, this came to a head in March 2022 with the intervention, the right intervention made at the time by the Secretary of State, our right honourable friend, the Secretary of State, who made the right decision to call in the Commissioners. And I would say there has been progress. And I've also been very, very pleased recently with the engagement. I would like to thank you on the floor of the House with my honourable friend from North Dorset, who I know has took a real interest in the work in Sandwell, and he's to be commended on how he's picked up this interesting brief very quickly and very fully, and certainly with a council like Sandwell. But it is such an indictment on 50 years of failure that we are still the eighth most deprived borough in the country, and it is if the Labour Party in Sandwell take pride in that. They take pride in the fact that standards are dropping, and they offer no alternative. They offer no reason, they offer no alternative as to how we fix this. They seem to revel in it. And it absolutely blows my mind as to how anyone in a position of authority, particularly elected authority, that has stewardship over a community, and great communities that are in the Black Country, as I said in my maiden speech, these people are grafters and fighters. They deserve so much better than this shambles. But yet we see that time again, these people that claim to be representative of working people, well, I think that's the biggest joke any of us have ever heard, are somehow reveling in the fact that standards are falling and things are not as they seem. I will give way to my honourable friend.
I'm grateful for him to giving way, and he, as I, have a fantastic set of communities in his constituency and in Wolverhampton North East, and we share some similar problems in the Black Country, and certainly Wolverhampton has had 50 years similarly of Labour administration who like to blame Conservative governments for the failure. But ultimately, when you are the worst in something, and every other national authority has the same Conservative government, it is time to take responsibility. But does he share my concern that the tens of millions of pounds of investment coming into our constituencies from this caring, levelling-up Conservative government are not, we're not seeing the results? Our constituents are not feeling the benefits, like in Wentworth, which he knows well, he's visited with me, where I've secured £3 million of High Street Regen funding, my Labour Council has not put forward a plan on paper nearly three years later. I'm sure he has similar incidences.
My honourable friend is absolutely right, and she's a doughty champion for the people of Wentworth, of Bushbury, and the rest of her constituency in Wolverhampton North East. And it almost feels, and I think she may share this concern, there's almost a little bit of clock running down.
Yes.
It feels as if, you know, they can see the clock ticking, and they don't quite want to give the recognition anywhere else, so we'll just see how we can do this. Now, I will say, actually, officers at Sandwell Council, particularly since new faces have appeared, seem to be more on this. But there is still that political concern that the political leadership of these authorities sees some sort of, I don't know, win out of this not materialising. And it's absolutely crazy. As I say, half a billion pounds into my borough, and yet the narrative seems to be all Tory cuts. And I'm sure it's the same in the great city of Wolverhampton. So as I say, Mr Deputy Speaker, you know, the narrative will be it's 14 years of the Tories. It's not though, it's 50 years of Labour, it's 50 years of Labour turning their back on these communities. Now, I have a solution for my honourable friend, and it was coined in the campaign that has been launched with such enthusiasm. Scrap Sandwell, quite frankly. Sandwell is an artificial construction. It was constructed in the Ted Heath reforms of the 1970s, bringing together six very different towns in the Black Country. Now, I appreciate that my honourable friend is not going to be able to necessarily stand up today and go, yes, absolutely, as much as I would absolutely be over the moon for him to do that. And clearly there are always middle grounds in these things in terms of how we compare our communities. But the truth is, Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council in particular, and the political leadership of that council, has brought embarrassment to the communities I represent. And I will say this, because, you know, the retort I've had, particularly from Labour politicians, has been one of, well, you're talking the area down. Well, no. Because in the campaign we launched in October, Mr Deputy Speaker, 80% of respondents, we had thousands of responses, 80%, so they don't recognise themselves from coming from Sandwell. If you come from Wensbury, you come from Wensbury. If you're from Tipton, you're from Tipton. If you're from Ockery, you're from Ockery. If you're from Great Bridge, you're from Great Bridge. If you're from Smeddick, you're from Smeddick. You're not from Sandwell. What is Sandwell? Sandwell is the name of the Franciscan Priory from a thousand years ago. It's not a place. Well, it is a place, but it's a constructed place. You know, people are proud of their towns. People want to, I'm proud that I live in Wensbury, Mr Deputy Speaker, I'm proud of that town, mentioned in the Doomsday Book a thousand years ago. That's what people want to see. And, you know, the real life impact of this, of course, is that I've seen my towns in Tipton and Wensbury miss out because Sandwell Council's priorities have been in West Bromwich and Smeddick. Or because the arbitrary thresholds haven't been met because of the size of those towns. Now, clearly there are options that can be explored, and I appreciate that my, as I say, there are many mechanisms that we can utilise to ensure that the identity of these communities is respected and is accentuated and is brought to the fore. Because I think for my constituents, Mr Deputy Speaker, that is so important for them. They're proud of where they come from, they're proud of the heritage of the towns that they live in, they're fed up of this creation that's turned to this monster, leaving them without services. I mean, we've had the ridiculous situation today where they've taken all the pay-and-display parking machines out of the car parks in Springhead in Wensbury, expecting people to all go online, not realising that most of the demographics that utilise these services are of an age where they're probably not digitally connected in the first place. I mean, this is, when I talk about governance, Mr Deputy Speaker, this is the kind of lunacy and idiotic ideas that come out from this rabble. And yet they sit here and lord it, as if they've been hard done by. But we need proactive government in our towns. Now, whether that's through an empowered town council, and I know there's examples in the West Midlands where that's happened, or whether through some other format, but we need something where we can be able to safeguard the identity and actually have a local government structure that preserves and looks after the identity of my proud towns in Tipton and in Wensbury. It's as simple as that. And, you know, I would say to my honourable friend, you know, I'm looking forward to his visit to the Black Country, by the way, and I'm absolutely, I know he will be coming along, I'm sure he'll visit my honourable friend in Wentworth as well on the way. Our proud Black Country towns have so much to offer. The governance at Sandwell Metropolitan Council has done nothing but brought embarrassment to these towns. And it's not talking down these communities by highlighting that. It's not talking down the communities by highlighting the fact that a Labour Party that has governed this area for 50 years has done nothing but to the detriment of people, and has seen their services cut and their opportunities eradicated and their aspirations. Well, I would say their aspirations, but their aspirations have been cut because the people that I represent, Mr Deputy Speaker, they are aspirational, they want to achieve, but they are being blockers time and time again by this Labour administration. So what I would say, I would actually wish to sort of finalise my remarks with a bit of a quotation from history, and I think, I hope my honourable friend appreciates this. And I think, I was looking as I was sort of preparing my comments today, there's something that I think sums up my thoughts on the situation of governance at Sandwell Metropolitan Council, and I'm sure, I'm sure those that have studied this will know where this has come from. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and provide new guards for their future security. My honourable friend probably knows where that line has come from. It was from the Declaration of Independence in 1776. But what I would say to this House is, the security and the safeguarding of the future of these proud towns is at the heart of what I'm here to do. They have had half a century of disservice by this shambolic Labour rabble, who have done nothing but tried to eradicate their life chances and leave them worse off, which is never, should never be the case. I look forward to it, my honourable friend. I really, really am so grateful for the time and effort he's put into Sandwell. I know he is committed to make sure that we get this right. I thank my honourable friend from Wolverhampton North East for her considered intervention, and I thank the House today, and you, Mr Deputy Speaker, for hearing my comments. I know for my constituents, I made them a promise when I was elected to this place, which I said after 50 years of feeling ignored, they would never be ignored again. And I hope, Mr Deputy Speaker, with this speech today, I've made sure their voices are heard loud and clear.
Local Government Minister Simon Hall.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Deputy Speaker. And can I, first of all, thank my honourable friend for raising this issue in the debate for the adjournment today. Mr Deputy Speaker, I've been doing this job for nine weeks, and if I had a fiver for every time my honourable friend has stopped me in the lobby or in the corridor to raise an issue, or have a conversation about his Borough Council, then it would certainly have bought him and I quite a good dinner, I would have thought, by the time we finish, because he never misses an opportunity, and he is right to do so. We use the phrase 'doughty champion' quite a lot to describe colleagues, he truly is. And his constituents should be proud and pleased with the passion, the concern and the care on whose behalf he advocates so vociferously, not just to me, but I know to my right honourable friend, the Secretary of State, and of course to ministers across the government. He is to be warmly commended for all he does on behalf of his residents. And he was right to talk in the first instance with regards to money, and I shall just set the scene if I may. Sandwell's reserves stand, as of the 31st of March, somewhere in the region of £110.5 million. That's very good. That speaks to sensible management and ensuring that there is funds available for a rainy day. The 24 to 25 provisional local government finance settlement makes available £388.9 million for my honourable friend's council, an increase in core spending power of £25.4 million, or 7% in cash terms, when compared to 23.24. So I would share my honourable friend's belief that to say that all of the council's problems are rooted in the heartlessness and lack of thought or attention from this government are scotched, Mr Deputy Speaker, just by those figures. But my honourable friend was right to go on and to talk about the other investments, important investments, which have been made in his borough by this government. £69.5 million from the Towns Fund, £20.3 million from the Levelling Up Partnership, £20 million from the Levelling Up Fund Round Two, £20 million from the Levelling Up Fund Round Three, and £20 million for a capital regeneration project. Now, those are important figures and important projects of themselves, Mr Deputy Speaker. But when added together, how anybody could suggest that this is a government and a party of government that does not care for the people of Sandwell, and is seeking to do all that it can, working alongside elected members, be they local councillors or members of Parliament, to help drive that figure of eighth most deprived borough in England into a far better place, I don't think their argument stands up to challenge. And what I would say to my honourable friend, and I know that he will agree with me in this assessment, he was right to talk about the potential downsides, and he manifested some of them in his remarks, when any one political party dominates the political scene and the landscape for a considerable period of time. I hope that what his election has demonstrated, and other honourable friends representing constituencies in the area, is that we believe that levelling up is all about aspiration and ambition for all, that no part of our country is left behind, that none of our people do not deserve our attention, our help and our support. So I'm very pleased and proud to serve in a department in this government, which has spent so much, both money, time and effort, considering the needs of Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council. I think we have a proud record upon which we stand, and I'm sure that many people in my honourable friend's constituency recognise that all too well. Now, we have to look, before we look to the present and the future, slightly to the past. Commissioners had to go into the council because, as they themselves recognised, there were serious governance issues, problems with culture and leadership. These had included allegations of serious misconduct by both members and officers. The council had had six different leaders in six years, it makes it feel a bit like this place, Mr Deputy Speaker, and three chief executives over the previous three years. Now, that instability led to a breakdown in trust, respect and confidence between those holding governance roles at the council. On services, the time the authorities spent responding to internal allegations and complaints had impacted on its ability to focus on service improvement, inadequate procurement and contract management arrangements led to poor decision-making, and impacted negatively on key services, including transport for children and those with special educational needs. Now, it was those triggers that prompted my right honourable friend, the Secretary of State, to send in the cavalry. He was right to do so, and I know my honourable friend has not criticised, in fact, he's applauded my right honourable friend for the action that he took. And that action has worked. I want to pay tribute to the current leadership of Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council. Are they getting everything right? No. But there again, I have to share a secret with my honourable friend, neither do ministers in government all of the time. We are all human, to err as human to forgive, Mr Deputy Speaker, as we know is divine. But significant improvements have been made, which has allowed the Commissioners to continue to make in their published reports through to the department, clear trajectories of improvement. Not just improvements in output of service to those who are most in need, but a significant step change in how the council has ordered and organised itself and its approach to governance. Sometimes admitting when one is wrong, facing into the problem is the biggest challenge. And once that is overcome, the route to recovery appears clear. It is not without stumbling blocks and stones, it will not be without pauses along the way. But they have made significant progress, and as I say, they should be both congratulated and encouraged. When the position of the Commissioners cease, and we will be looking to that in due course, the Local Government Association will continue to work with the council to ensure that that path of progress, that path of improvement, which I'm very hopeful and confident local residents will start, or have started to see and will start to see, is continued. Falling back into the old ways of performance or lack of performance will not be tolerated. And it will come as no surprise, I say this, Mr Deputy Speaker, not as a threat but as a statement of fact, that for any authority which has found itself in the position whereby Commissioners have had to be sent in, and where progress has been made and the work of those Commissioners is able to be drawn to a conclusion within the envisaged timetable, of course we are going to keep a weather eye, a kindly eye, if you will, of a paternal godfather on a council that is trying still to do its best, and we will continue to be there to support, to advise and to encourage. Because the depths of the change which the council needed to be made will by definition necessitate that. My honourable friend talked about the abolition of Sandwell. Now, he will not be surprised to know that I am going to repeat the dictum of the government. We will, of course, always respond to any reorganisation of local government, that that has to be from the grassroots up, support has to be demonstrated at both the political level, the community level, the business community, other public service providers, and a clear case be made. I have to say, Mr Deputy Speaker, and I hope that this gives some clarity to my honourable friend, though I appreciate it may not be the clarity that he seeks, but I hope it gives both the certainty to the council and also to an indication of the improvements which the council have made to the residents and council taxpayers, and more importantly, service users of Sandwell Borough Council, that I would be concerned that a change in the architecture of the borough at this stage would prove a distraction from the vital improvement work that is ongoing. Now, of course, there are ways to improve scrutiny, of course, there are ways through the localism agenda to empower the towns, particularly those historic towns which feel that they have a great sense of place and identity. But I would suggest to my honourable friend that he works with the council leadership to explore those opportunities, to give a much greater sense of place for those towns where people live in them and feel a very close affinity with them. So in conclusion, Mr Deputy Speaker, a huge investment in Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council in monetary terms, in time and in energy terms. And why do we do this? We do it because we care. We do it because we care and understand the important role that local government plays in the fabric of our nation, in the powerful role that it plays in creating a sense of place and of delivering change. sense of place and of delivering change, of responding to changing needs of the most vulnerable and those who are looking to improve on the agenda of hope, aspiration and change. With my honourable friend and other colleagues, with an engaged council who have a new and improved outlook, I have every confidence, Mr Deputy Speaker, that all of us pulling together can deliver for the people of Sandwell Metropolitan Borough Council. Thank you.
Question is that this House should stand adjourned. Does many of that opinion say aye?
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it. Order, order.
The proceeding has ended.